We're gonna begin with the invitation from Council and Hany, followed by the pledge. He say.
Please pray with me. Dear Lord, we come before you this morning, and furtherance of our community, grant us your wisdom and protection. Give us your conviction to seek out pathways that bring peace, justice, and love. Lord, we pray over our first responders and thank you for their protection over this city. Be with them and their families. Lord, I just pray that we glorify you in all that we do, our actions up here and our actions out in the community. Thank you for this opportunity, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the units from July the 26th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're gonna come down for some awards.
All right, we've got four folks here that represent 120 years of service. The first one, Kenneth Cottle, police officer, 25 years of service. I don't believe he's here, but I still want to recognize Kenneth. We have John, I'm probably not gonna pronounce this correctly.
Boswell.
Boswell, police sergeant, 30 years of service. Next, we have Terry Hawkins, fire driver, engineer, 30 years of service. All right, next we have David Espinoza, crew leader, 35 years of service. Before we all leave, I do want to say just thank you for your service. I mean, 120 years is a long time. We have 30 and 35 years respectively. That's a long time to serve the city of Tyler. And it's always our goal to make it a place where you want to work and continue to work, and we want to keep employees. So thank you all for setting the example that you set, just by sticking around and being a mentor to all the young people. So thank you all.
All right, we're going to start with H1, city manager.
Good morning, Mayor Warren and city council. We're here this morning to conduct the first of two public hearings on the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. This version has been condensed to allow time for members of the public to speak. Anyone wishing to see the full budget presentation may do so by visiting the city's website. There is a link to a video of the full budget presentation on the homepage. The only action for the city council today is to conduct the public hearing following the presentation. Let's begin by looking at the key items related to the general fund. We are recommending a property tax rate decrease for the coming year. Your current ad valorem property tax rate is 26.185 cents per $100 valuation, and we're proposing through this budget to adopt a rate of 24.792 cents per $100 valuation. The projected property taxes for fiscal year 2024 amount to about $28.2 million, a $1.3 million increase from the previous year. The increase in tax revenue is due to growth in property value throughout the city. Even though we are adopting a lower tax rate, we are experiencing our second year of double-digit property value growth leading to an increase in the amount of levies we are projecting to collect. Because the tax rate we will discuss will affect each property owner differently, we use averages when looking at the effect on residents. With average home values increasing from $259,000 to $319,000, the proposed tax rate would result in an increase of $112.62 on the tax bill. I would like to note that even though there is much thought that goes into the budget for property taxes and the property tax rate, property tax revenues only cover approximately 46% of the public safety budgets. Due to this, the city of Tyler relies heavily on other sources of funding for the general fund. Much of the difference is covered by the amount of sales tax we collect. The rest of the needed funds are made up of franchise fees, fines, facility rental fees, and other charges. Last year, the council approved funding for a classification and compensation study. This year's proposed budget includes implementing Phase 1 of our findings. The Phase 1 implementation brings, includes bringing all our civil service positions, these are your police and fire positions, to market and ensuring that current non-civil service employees are no more than 15% behind their market value. There are also two capital projects built into the proposed budget. Two cents of proposed tax rate are dedicated to our Quality Street Commitment Fund and will provide approximately $2 million for maintenance and repairs. Additionally, this budget includes approximately $1.7 million in one-time capital purchases funded through savings in the current fiscal year. These capital projects include facilities, continuation of the police equipment replacement program, the purchase of two new fire engines, and replacing select mediums with stamped concrete to help with maintenance. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2024 includes adjustments to our utility rates. We're recommending implementing Phase 2 of the Uniform Volumetric Rate Conversion. We started the conversion during fiscal year 2023 and plan to have a flat volumetric rate by 2027. The flat volumetric rate is designed so that each user pays the same rate for every thousand gallons used and does not reward higher volume users with lower rates. To address the capital needs of our water and wastewater system discovered in our most recent master plans, we are recommending the volumetric rates for both water and wastewater increase by 20 cents. This increase will help us pay for approximately $43 million in needed capital improvements. Fiscal year 2024 will mark the seventh year of the EPA consent decree. There are $28 million in estimated capital projects during this year. To pay for the debt required to fund these projects, the regulatory compliance fee will increase by $6.28. With the recommended changes above, we are estimating the average monthly residential bill will increase $9.16. Finally, the proposed budget includes an increase on the residential trash collection fee. We are recommending an increase of $1.85 for residential trash service. This will allow for us to continue to offer a premium twice-a-week service to our over 31,000 customers. As mentioned earlier, our only action today is to conduct a public hearing. Our next public hearing will be held during the city council meeting on September 13th. The adoption of the budget and tax rate will be considered after that public hearing. Thank you for giving me the time to present our recommendations, and thank you for the ideas and direction you provided throughout the year that set the stage for the budget we are recommending.
Any questions for the city manager before we go into the public hearing? All right, we will now open up a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget and on the proposed property tax rate, 0.24792 cents per 100 of taxable property value. I do not have any cards on this item, however, I would like to give anybody that's here opportunity to come up and speak if you wish on this item. Ma'am, come on up. Just come over there and just, if you can give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Pat Cryer. My property is at 3120 Tanglewood that I'm gonna talk to you about. I wanted to tell you, first of all, I think that you do a marvelous job, and I know that you have thought about the budget, but I wanted to tell you about how that, those increases affect the usual people of this city. I have a couple of grandchildren who are really struggling in order to pay the rent and buy the food and buy the gas and that sort of thing. I want to remind you that the economy is very bad right now. It costs a lot more to buy groceries and that sort of thing, and every bit of money that you take from the money, take from the people of this city, it takes away from the things that they really do need. And I'm afraid that when, when we have the proposed tax rate and we do these increases, that it gets to be kind of a knee-jerk thing. It's okay to go ahead and take more money from the taxpayers in order to, to get your things done. I want you to reconsider what you're, what you're proposing and try to get it down to the no new revenue area. I think that when we talk about, I know that this is a touchy thing, but when you talk about raising all the city employees 5%, I don't get 5%. Social Security gave me a little bit more money for the $700 a month that I get from then, but it's not 5%. And, and that's a 5% on the 5% that you got last year. The taxes for, for the property on Tanglewood, the 3120 Tanglewood, last year, the taxes were, were $2,162 a year. This year, the proposed tax rate is gonna be $3,283. I mean, when you look at that, that's more than $1,000 a year for, that you're taking away from things that, that I could do. The people who, we have a lot of people now who are having to pay, pay rent. Well, every year that you raise the taxes, that rent goes up, and it makes it lots harder for those people to have to come up with the money to pay the rent. And sometimes that's whether or not you're gonna buy a loaf of bread or get your money, get your pill bottle from the, from the pharmacy. So I want you to really think about how that's affecting the, the people that you're taking the money from in order to do the things that, that you've agreed that are important. And I, I heard the guy talking about how important those things are, but maybe you can look over that budget very carefully and find some more things so that you can put it down to at least to, to get to the no new revenue rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Is there anybody else that wishes to come up and speak? Come on up. Cassandra, I forgot to set the timer a minute ago. I'm not saying this guy looks like he's long-winded, but might be. Can we go to three minutes?
My name's Nathan Noble. I live at 1905 Gerald here in Tyler. Y'all made the comment that y'all wanted to make Tyler a good place to work and live. Charging people more, taking more from their daily lives to be able to buy groceries is not a way to improve community. It's not. It's a way to make it worse. A 10% tax increase, there's no way that, that y'all should be able to pass, pass a tax increase at all without voter approval. The, the way to making the community better would be for a tax decrease, if anything. My property value increased by $100,000 last year. I can't sell my house for what it's appraised at. I went and argued. There's no, so my taxes are through the roof already. I'm on a fixed budget. I, I'm disabled. I have two small kids. There's just so much money to go around, and, and you're not making the city better by, by overcharging your, your constituents. There's an excess of wasted money in this town. My kids, where my kid practiced soccer at Pollard now has an eight-foot sidewalk that just meanders right through the field. Where's he gonna go practice soccer? Now we gotta go drive across town and find a new place to practice. Well, that's more gas money, more time. Well, it's just more, 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 and people here at some point have no more. So I, I think as, as much as it would be nice to give city employees a 5% raise, most of them live in the city of Tyler, so they're gonna have that taken right back by all these tax increases. And they're not gonna have a 5% raise. It's just everybody's gonna end up paying. It, it, it's a, it's a truth. So please rethink your, your, your voting, whatever, whatever decision you have in your head now, please reconsider to, to, to not pass this. It's not good for the community. It's not good for anybody.
Thank you, sir. All right, anybody else before, do you wanna address the taxes?
Just a couple of clarifications on some comments that were made. The budget doesn't include a 5% pay increase for employees. On the compensation component, there is with the, the study that we did, there will be an average 6% for police, for sworn personnel, average 3% for fire. Depends upon where they are in their positions as far as that changes. There is a 3% increase that merit increase that is built in for non-civil service positions that are in the budget, as well as made mention of bringing up to at least those below the 15% of the, of the market values, bringing them up to at least 15% below market values. So those are the compensation components. The county is doing a 5% increase, and I think long view is, but the city chose for a 3% merit increase that it put into there, as well as the compensation components to get to market for our police and fire positions. Also, the property tax rate increase is a 3.5% increase of the, what is called the no new revenue rate. So it's the, it's the flat rate. So I know the comments were made as far as what that percentage increase is, but the one that actually we have proposed for you is up to the voter approval rate, but it is a 3.5% increase over that previous rate, or the previous, as far as levy that you had. Rates are kind of inconsequential because, actually, it's, we're showing you a rate decrease, but because of the way that they're calculated, you're comparing rates is always a little bit of a difficult thing, because you're actually comparing it to what was your previous revenue generated. Also, Pollard Park, as I mentioned, that was done with as far as a citizen initiative of hearing from the area people over there, and is funded through your landfill fees that you charge to non-city residents that goes into your park improvement funds, that goes into some of your regional parks like Pollard Park that makes those improvements. And it does include opportunities for soccer fields as well as part of that.
And I guess the other thing I would wanna mention is the appraisal district, the city of Tyler has no control, has nothing, no, 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 no. I'm just telling you, we, we have nothing to do with the appraisal district, so that when they, they set the value of property, we have no input on that, so.
It's still going up as the numbers.
Okay. I have, is there anybody else that wishes to come speak? All right, seeing none, we will now close our public hearing, and we'll move on to H2.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. The next two items are very similar. They are public hearings for our scheduled TERS updates for Zone 4 and Zone 3, so we will do those independently. And what we're asking for is requesting the council to hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance amending reinvestment zone number four. As you can see on the screen, that's the boundary, it's our downtown TERS. And with that, we are looking to increase the duration of the TERS from 2046 to 2060, as well as adjusting some of the type of projects that would be covered under the TERS, which would include maintenance of our downtown area of the square as it is improved over the next several years, as well as public safety services. And we're looking at our, our draft project cost, is listed on the screen there, and then we will bring the final project plan to you at the end of the process. So with that, we are requesting a public hearing on TERS 4.
All right, any questions for Heather before we move on to the public hearing? All right, we will now open a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance amending reinvestment zone number four. I do not have any cards on this item. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing on H2. H3.
And as mentioned before, very similar item. This is for Zone 3, as you can see, is in our north end area, and we are proposing to extend the duration, the term of this TERS to 2060 as well, and include public improvements, which also includes street projects, and then update the financial, the project cost and financial plan, and again, bring that to you at a later time. And with that, we are requesting a public hearing for TERS 3.
All right. Any questions for Heather before we move to the public hearing? All right, we will now open a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance amending reinvestment zone number three. We have no cards on this item. Does anybody wish to come speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on H3. All right, zoning item, Z1, Kyle.
Good morning, everybody. This first item is a request for a zone change. This is on North Beverly Avenue. This is from R1B Single Family to R1D Single Family and Single Family Detached, Attached and Detached District. The applicant plans to develop two additional homes on these lots, further subdivide them for two more homes. This is, again, along North Beverly Avenue and East Line Street. It's in the Tyler North End, and so additional rooftops in this area would be consistent with the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan. Generally, the area is zoned for multi, or for industrial use, however, it's developed primarily with single-family homes. The Future Land Use Guide identifies it as single-family, which this request is consistent with that. As you can see here, there's two homes on the, the two lots. They plan to further subdivide those two lots into two more to build some more homes. The plan to commission by unanimous vote recommended approval of this request.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z1.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKellar. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This is a request to close the right-of-way or close the street for Pickens, at Pickens Drive. This is off of Old Omen Road, property owned by the University of Texas System. The, the applicant does own all the surrounding properties of Pickens Drive, which currently dead ends into the, the, the school there at the, at the end of the road. And so they, they plan to abandon this right-of-way, incorporate it into their development to provide for more security for the, the activities on the, on the properties there. The plan to commission by a unanimous vote recommended approval of this closure, subject to it being replanted into the, the property within six months.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z2.
Got a motion by Curtis. Oh, I do have a card from Andy Kraus. Do you just wanna speak if there's questions? It's going pretty smooth so far. Okay. Who, who made the motion? Who made the second? Got a motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Oh, she carries. Sorry. Z3.
Yes, this is a request for a zone change from RPO, which is the Office District, to AR Adaptive Reuse District, to allow for this property on Spring Avenue to be used for either a single-family residence or a light intensity office use. As you can see, the surrounding properties are generally office or commercial along South Spring Avenue, or Spring Street. And so many of those homes are being either used as office, converted office, or still a single-family home. This zoning will allow for the flexibility to use either, either of those uses. And the, the Future Land Use Guide supports this request as it encourages single-family use. This is the property generally still developed with a, a house, and so are some of the properties to the north and south. The plan to commission by unanimous vote recommended approval of this request.
Any questions for Kyle? All right, motion by McGee, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Z4.
This is a, another thoroughfare closure, or right-of-way closure for portions of Crestway Drive, Travis Street, and Woodley Street. As you can see here, is that the end, the end of these streets where there's a creek that runs through this area, which make, has made it imfeasible to, to build that, those, that, that street connection there. We actually had a request probably a year or so ago to close this right-of-way, which that was approved. However, the, the right-of-way was not incorporated into the adjacent property within the, the six months, and so there's, we're reconsidering it here today. The applicant plans to incorporate this area into the adjacent properties that they are still, my understanding is they're still looking to purchase some of the adjacent properties. Once they have that, they plan to combine all those for, for a development. With this request, we did not receive any letters in opposition to it, and therefore the, the plan to commission by a unanimous vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z4.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Please call. Chief, O1.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Good to see you this morning, Mr. City Manager. I think everybody knows we've had a juvenile curfew ordinance in place since 1994. It was rewritten in 1998, and we, we come back about every three years and put this in to reauthorize it. This year, the legislature passed HB 1819, which preempted cities from putting in place or enforcing juvenile ordinances. So today, it is recommended that the city council adopt the attached ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 4, by repealing the juvenile curfew regulations to comply with recent changes in law.
You know, when I was a kid, in, at 10 o'clock, there was a, a ad that came on. At 10 o'clock, do you know where your children are? And, and we all remember that. And we all wanna know where our children are, and it just, it was, it's nice sometimes when a city has the authority to regulate this without being told it would be no longer can regulate this. So here it is, an ordinance to repeal knowing where your children are. So I guess we're really, I'm not stopping. Any questions for the chief?
My one question is, chief, by repealing this curfew, is it providing more effort, more trouble, more for your guys, or, you know, kids are already probably out beyond the curfew as it was.
There, there were exceptions in there for working, for school events, for being with parents in cars. Those things were built in, safeguards on it. It allowed us to contact individuals walking through neighborhoods at 2 or 3 o'clock in the morning, often had to associate with, with, with preventing auto burglaries or activities like that, or, or just bad behavior. It's removed that from it now, so we'll have to just rely on the other, there are laws we have in place, and we'll still contact individuals and contact their parents if necessary, but there's no enforcement mechanism now, and I'm not sure why that is, but I don't really try to understand the legislature.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. Did you know, what was it, the driving? Do you know, what was the driving force?
There's, yeah, you're asking me to explain the legislature. I can't really.
Fair enough.
I'm not making a motion. Move to approve, oh one, second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Oh two.
Christie, would you introduce yourselves? Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Christie Nipp. I'm the Services Coordinator for Parks Department. Christie, can I help you? I am here today to request that the city council consider adopting an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter Eight, by authorizing Class One Maximum Assist 20 miles an hour with 250 watt maximum continuous output pedal assist no throttle e-bikes upon the grounds of any public park or recreation area or trail. There are three official classifications for e-bikes, and we are proposing the ordinance be updated to allow the first classification be permitted in parks or trails. Class one e-bikes for the ordinance is recognized as a motorized e-bike that provides assistance only when the rider is pedaling and stops providing assistance when the bicycle reaches 20 miles per hour with no throttle and a maximum power output of 250 watts. Currently, the ordinance prohibits all motorized vehicles, including ATVs, dirt bikes, vehicles, and all e-bikes. This update would permit Classification One e-bikes while prohibiting Classification Two and Three e-bike, excuse me, as well as all other motorized vehicles still. Many individuals utilize these e-bikes for mobility and pedal assistance purposes, so the goal of this ordinance update is to ensure we are remaining current with our accessibility needs for the community in our parks and trails. Thank you.
So currently, motorized vehicles are prohibited, prohibited like on legacy trails. So this is actually giving citizens the right to have an e-bike under these conditions.
Correct.
Certain type. But right now, if you're on there before this ordinance, you're not supposed to be on there.
That's correct.
So this is actually.
It's giving you more access.
More access.
That's correct.
We occasionally run into this with ordinances that were written before the technology was invented, and so.
That's right.
What you're running into.
So as the technology changes and evolves, we're trying to make sure we're staying as current with the needs and the resources that are available.
Has anyone up here ever ridden an e-bike? They're fabulous. I mean, there's a hand raising back there. I love them.
They're great.
Any questions for Christie?
Move to approve, oh two. Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Todd, what do we owe this pleasure?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm here to speak on item number oh three, request that the city council consider adopting an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter Eight, changing the required size of memorials or monuments at Tyler cemeteries. The Parks Department proposes this amendment to the city's ordinance governing the size of monuments at city cemeteries. It's recommended that we reduce the minimum width of cemetery monuments, tombstones. Currently, we have, our minimum has to be eight inches thick, but we're proposing to lower that to six inches thick. This will do several things. It will actually put us more in line with the local cemetery's requirements for monuments. Most of them are six inches, not eight inches thick. And I've talked to the monument companies. The move from eight inches to six inches will not affect the structural integrity of tombstones. And one of the, probably the best thing I see about this, this will actually lower the cost to those who are purchasing monuments for their loved ones. So in this day and age, you see a cost reduction to our citizens, that's something positive, and we think that this is a good recommendation.
All right. Any questions for Todd?
Todd, my only question would be, did someone bring this to your attention, bring it to Parks' attention about potential change of the size of the monument?
Well, just going through and talking to the monument companies and other cemeteries, which we try to stay in the loop with them, we realized that we were one of the last ones to hang on to the eight-inch thickness, and that was a significant cost. This will save people about $1,000 to $2,000 on a double monument. So, and like I said, most people, to the naked eye, go and looking at a cemetery monument, won't be able to tell the difference between the six and the eight. Me working at the cemetery, I've got an eagle eye on that, and I can pretty much tell. But this will, this is something that's going to put us more compliant with other cemeteries.
Good.
Move to approve, oh three.
Second. Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
M one, Paul.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. I get to visit with you this morning about agenda item M one, the off-system or non-text stop crossings one. The one, meaning this will probably be the first of several packages to come. This package, it was intended to address erosion and maintenance at bridge structures. And just to, not to insult anyone, but what text stop considers a bridge is anything that crosses a waterway. So it could be simple, as simple as a box culvert or a true, which you would picture as a bridge on pilings. The engineering for this package was done by Elledge Engineering Corp., and we started out with six locations, and two of those locations we ended up dropping from the package for various reasons, I'll discuss in just a minute, and we added one location that popped up that is something that we felt we needed to address sooner. So this package is split up with funding from Halfcent. These three locations will be funded with Halfcent sales tax monies, the North Parkdale Drive, West Grandin Boulevard, and the East Creek Road and Rose Rudman Trail Structures. You can see some of the images there that are indicating why we need to do some maintenance here. There are also, there were also three items considered to be paid for out of budget funds. Two of those were, as I mentioned, were dropped, one of which is the North Broadway Bridges there. And looking at that structure, I felt it was something that city staff could do, and based on the bid numbers that we received, it was, I didn't think as good a value as the other packages were. The other location that was dropped was at Fair Lane. That structure is called out in our master drainage plan to be replaced completely due to overtopping in the Hundred Year Flood. And so whatever we did there would be undone whenever we got around to doing that. So we're going to do our best to maintain that and limp it along until we get to the point where we can replace that. Or maybe we'll get lucky and work something out with text stop like we did on the Whittle Crossing that's just downstream from there. The other location that is staying as part of this package is the East Dona Street and South Porter Avenue Crossing. You can see the riprap on the downstream side is totally falling apart. That structure is undermined. And the one that popped up that we felt we needed to address is just north of there on South Porter Avenue. It's a location that continues to wash and continue to erode, and the Streets Department has maintained it pretty extensively twice before, and this third time, they just got over there to limp it along. So we're going to put in a swale there and do some work to eliminate that problem. That's right, drains right into Black Fork toward the start of it. So we advertised this package June ninth and sixteenth. We had a non-mandatory pre-bid conference on the twenty-seventh, and when we opened bids on the eleventh, we had three bids, Platinum Paving, F&amp;H Construction, and True Roads Construction. Platinum Paving was the obvious low bidder, and we, that's a new contract with the City of Tyler, but we've asked them, and they've completed the qualified contractor application. We've verified references and verified their personnel, so we feel good about their ability to complete this work. Again, I mentioned the funding. The details there are $708,995.88 will be coming from the Halfcent Sales Tax, and the stormwater maintenance budget will be $298,008.31. I mentioned why we dropped those, but there's a little recap there, those locations. We bid the Halfcent Sales Tax as a base bid, and then we had the budget ones as add alternates to where we could pick and choose which ones we wanted to award. So with all that, I'll pause for any questions before I make my recommendation.
Any questions for Paul? You want to read all that, or you just want us to vote on it?
If I have to, I will, but if you guys are willing to vote on that, I'm good.
Oh, you're looking at me. Go ahead and read it.
Okay. I saw that, but I didn't want to say anything. So it is recommended that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a capital improvement project or construction contract with Platinum Paving LLC for the off-system non-text stop crossing one project, bid number twenty-three dash zero four six, totally $1,007,419 to be paid with $708,995.88 from Halfcent Sales Tax Funds for projects one through three, and $298,008.31 to be paid for from stormwater budgetary funds for projects four and five.
Well done. Any questions for Paul, or anyone want to make a motion?
Move to approve, oh one.
Motion by McGee, second by McKellar. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Paul. Darian.
Good morning. Here to talk about Mirabeau Street improvements. As many of you know, we, this was included with Donna Melinda in Mirabeau Street Projects. Leland Bradley was a contractor on that. We decided to go ahead and remove this from that contract and add it to an existing contract we have, which is the asphalt street improvements, asphalt enhancements project. So there are, there are $200,000 worth of contingency funds included in that project, but those were on there, were in there for a purpose to, when we're doing asphalt enhancements and overlays and all that, we always find things we don't need or need to do just a little bit more. So I did not want to take up all that with this project, this change order. So this is a change order, not a field order, to take up the existing contingencies. We have, we got a bid from Reynolds and Kay, who was doing that one, for $193,464. We're also including some improvements, some repair of a damaged driveway at 309 Donna Drive. This project will be funded from Halfcent Sales Tax, and we added 60 days to the contract for the enhancement project. Contractors only expect it to take about 30, especially with this kind of weather, and get in there and get out pretty quick. So, but as far as, you never know what's going to happen the next 30 to 60 days as far as weather. So we went ahead and added 60 days that was included in there. Now, as part of what's included is pretty much everything but the curb and gutter. We're going to go ahead and leave the curb and gutter in there, but we're putting an underdrain in on the north side of the street, and here's a showing of where the limits of the, of the project really is. We're putting an underdrain in there to collect the groundwater and get it out of the, out of the area so we can protect the street. And we have five inches of asphalt going down, over six inches of cement treated base. So with that, I want to show you some pictures of just some of the, what some of the areas on Mirabeau look like. Now, we did, you can see some there in front of, on the top left a little bit, but it is definitely in need of improvements, with some base failures and concrete failures. So with that, I would like to request the city council consider authorizing city manager to execute a change order to the 2023 Asphalt Enhancement Project for the reconstruction of Mirabeau Street in the amount of $196,899.43.
Any questions or comments for Darian?
Darian, is it groundwater or surface water?
Ground. It's groundwater.
Groundwater.
Thank you.
Second. Got a motion by McKellar, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M three.
M three. As many of you know, we all know, Douglas Boulevard has some serious flooding issues right there next to Christus, basically between Houston and front. So we wanted to go ahead and preempt and get a study to see what, what we can do, how we can improve this, how we can, because there's so many cars that flood there. You can see on the left, that's from an HDR, a recent HDR study of what the floodwaters extent, and then you can see it on the right, that is a picture from Christus Hospital's staff during one of the events. So really puts it in perspective. What we wanted to do here was really, we're going to look at the 10-year, the 25-year, the 100-year frequency storms. Our objective is to just contain the creek. What we're going to do, we're going to contain the creek within the channel, removing flood conditions on it for the 10-year forecast. So the smaller storm, we're going to try to contain it within the creek or within the, so it does not get on the street, and then we're going to try to see what we can do for the other storms. Now, I included this picture on the left, so you can see how much of the city actually drains through there. So it gives you quite a, quite a different perspective in there. So next, we want to evaluate the solutions. What can we do here? So what this would be for is, this is on, this is what can we do on Douglas Boulevard? What can we do here? Can we widen the channel? Because the channel is only just a few feet deep, and Douglas Boulevard is really not much higher than the top of the banks. So can we widen the channel? Will that help? Can we, can we put any, any type of enclosed structure there? Would that help? What can we do? Can we install a flood wall? In other words, we just put in containment, you know, just like you'd see, like on the Trinity River and through Dallas? Can we do that? You know, what all types can we do on Douglas Boulevard itself within the limits of this right here? So including increasing capacity up front. The front street culverts are a little undersized, so would that help us? Would it help us enough? Would it transmit enough water downstream? So next, we have several options to, to look upstream. What can we do upstream? In other words, Victory Park, excuse me, Victory Drive has a wide area. Can we, it's similar in this section. We have some area there. We could do some upstream, possibly maybe some upstream detention right in that area and not have any real property development. It's a street right-of-way. What can we do there? Or we can even go a little bit further upstream, and I show it in red, right there, Hog Middle School. We could put more of a regional detention pond within that field. And, you know, initially, we were thinking maybe we can, that would help. But this, one of the objectives here is to, what can we do? Is that, is that even an option? How much would that help? Initially, based upon the study that gave us this drainage area that HDR did for another project, it could potentially, at least in Victory Drive, reduce it almost a foot by putting that hog detention pond there. And we can make that more of an asset for the, for that property with maybe a soccer field down below with some stands, and, but that would require some coordination with Tyler ISD. Now, and as number six, there's always a do-nothing. We know what that is, but we always have that, what are the, what happens if we just do nothing? But also, we want to check, what about downstream? There is some property there just north of Bonner Elementary that's pretty much a hard piece of property to develop. That's why it's still undeveloped. Is there a way we can, and they're going to look at that. Can we look at that and get a regional detention pond there? It would be a limited size, but does downstream help us in? And it could be any combination of these options. So along with this, they will help us with notifying us on which properties we would need to acquire on this. So with that, City of Tyler Engineering Department requests the city council authorize that, City of Tyler Engineering Department requests the City Council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract with HGR for the analysis and study of Douglas Boulevard for a cost not to exceed $104,757.98.
So Darian, Front Street, is that a Tex-Stop road?
It is. It is State Highway 31. We would be, have to work with Tex-Stop to do.
So if you upsized those, you'd have to deal with them?
Correct.
Or get to deal with them, maybe get some of their money?
It would be lots of coordination with them, correct.
Yeah, that was my question. Is that already included in the budget of the study or this is going to be extra?
That would come during the construction phase. This is just to see and identify what we need to do and what the best option is to pursue for the formal design.
Darian, I've met with Christus several times and I know you have and I know the mayor has, and they appreciate the city, us doing anything to try to help them in this. And they realize that as they've grown and more hard surface they've put down, probably has contributed a little bit to this. So they're willing to work with the city any way they can to try to mitigate this problem. I know when it, when there's a huge rain predicted, they've got a system that they put in place, basically said, get your cars out of there or they may float away. But, but Christus is, really likes, are really excited about us moving forward on doing something to look at this and working with us on this. So thanks.
Does that mean money?
They have, they have proposed maybe a park or some, I think if there were some beautification efforts, a trail, you know, that you go through there while you're doing this, that they would work with us.
We could make, we could work with them to make any improvements we do in asset rather than just a liability or an ISMR for that reason also.
Thank you.
I haven't gotten a commitment from you.
I didn't get my answer, but that's okay.
As long as you understand that, Mary Elizabeth, if you're watching.
They have made a very considerable sizable investment into especially a midtown area with all of the buildings that they've done and, and just the services that they're offering. And so, yes, this is, this has been an ongoing problem for decades. You know, our streets and drainage crews gotten out there that cleared it. And mind you, it hasn't rained since they cleared it. I don't know if that was the cause of, the fact we haven't had rain. But it's, we have taken different steps to do what we can to make sure that that is open. And, but at the end of the day, there's still so much water going through there. And the piece, even, you know, in our conversation with Tyler ISD on the other side of Front Street, there's, was that Bonner Elementary?
Bonner.
And you can see how high that that has been built up because of the amount of water that just goes through that area. So it is something that is, is, one is, the situation with Christus becomes an immediate problem, but it is a whole drainage issue that runs, you know, through a huge swath of the middle of the city that needs to be worked on.
And it's not even in North Tyler, is it?
It goes down to North Tyler. You get the water.
Yes, I get it down there, but it doesn't start at North Tyler.
No.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Darian?
Move to approve in three.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Between you and Brad, you got to speak up on the other. I don't have hearing aids.
Making motion for Katie.
Kate.
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
I'm here for agenda item M4, which is an engineering services agreement for the Lake Tyler Raw Water Pump Station Improvements Project. The Lake Tyler Raw Water Pump Station was originally constructed in the 1950s and it was built to convey raw water from Lake Tyler to our Golden Road Treatment Plant. It travels eight miles into the city. The new, a new facility was constructed in 1998, which included larger pumps, three new vertical turbine pumps, and those pumps included VFDs, which are variable frequency drives. And that allows us to dial up and down on the speed of the pump. It allows us to more better control the flow from the pumps. So the VFDs actually that were installed in, in 1998, they're antiquated at this point and very difficult, but also very crucial to maintain. So right now, those VFDs, those parts are not available any longer. So we have an ongoing process where we, if, that, that picture in the lower right-hand corner, those are the, the VFDs inside the electrical building. We have a process where we take them apart, ship them off to Pennsylvania, to Siemens, to get them rebuilt, and then they have to come back to us. We reinstall them and then we take another one offline and we send it to Pennsylvania. So it's a very long, drawn-out process because the parts aren't readily available for us. So this project is really centered around replacing and updating those VFDs. It also includes a new electrical switchgear, an automatic transfer switch, as well as an electrical equipment building and electrical service, gate improvements, some valve improvements, and then also, very importantly, a standby generator for our Lake Tyler Raw Water Pump Station, which we don't currently have. This will enable us to operate this raw water pump station when there is a power outage. The opinion of probable project cost total is about 12.3 million. 11 million of that is for construction. So I'm here to request that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services contract in the amount of $1,335,300 with KSA, the Lake Tyler Raw Water Pump Station Improvements Project, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Kate? Got a motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, M5. This is actually an engineering services contract for the consent decree group six remedial measures implementation project. So assessments have been done over the last eight years, starting in 2017. We have completed groups one through five assessment and that's been completed and designed. Groups four and five are currently under construction. But Pipeline Analysis recently completed their assessment of the group six assets, which are manholes, sewer collection mains. And they submitted this group six annual condition remedial measures plan to the EPA and the TCEQ in July of this past year. So this project will include the design of 35 manholes and 45,300 linear feet of gravity main remediation. Likely, it'll be split into two different packages, design packages, traditional and specialty work. The estimated construction cost for group six is $12,088,000 with an engineering fee of $1,758,000. So it is recommended that the City Council authorize the city manager to execute an engineering services agreement with Langin Engineering for the group six consent decree remedial measures design in the amount of $1,758,000.
So what percentage are we done with the consent decree? Do you know?
Percentage? I can't, I can't speak in percentages right now, but I would say we're, we're in year seven of the 10 years. So I guess you could say 70% overall in the progress.
We might look at, we can get you the report that Art Insult does on that each month so you can kind of see that one. You've got several big projects, you know, a major project that's still coming in the next year or two. The one that will be a major as far as rehab and replacement program that will run through kind of through Tyler. And that's probably one of our biggest ones that's still coming down the line.
Right.
The rest, I mean, I don't, I can't speak into which projects we still have remaining, but you can see from the report as far as just which one, what you've been able to accomplish so far.
So we've assessed 70% total and we've constructed maybe about 40 to 50% of the construction improvements. Because the year after the assessment is complete, we have two years to do the actual construction afterwards. So it's like a three-year process.
Well, I know people see us authorizing 10 million and 20 million and 5 million and 10 million and they're saying, when is this going to stop? Well, if we're in year seven of 10, we're, we're on the downhill side.
Yeah, the estimates you're spending about in a 10-year period, based upon the amount of required remodel, as far as rehab, cleaning of your entire wastewater collection system, you'll spend about $250 million in total in that 10-year period.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve in five.
Okay.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Darian, Darian's back.
Tell them again. What I want to talk about now is Settlers Landing and Centennial Parkway extensions. Just to help spur development in this area, we wanted to extend Settlers Landing from where it is right behind the RV showroom by Camping World, where it dead ends just west of their driveway, all the way up to Broadway right-of-way where it will tie into Tex-Stop at that point. So we also want to extend, shown on there, Centennial Parkway down basically past the blue shaded area, which is the property that the city does own right at this point. So as part of this, I want to show you this, but I want to show you, we have the water line and the sanitary sewer line, sewer line extensions also. We will be taking that eight-inch dead end right there on, on Settlers Landing. We will be extending that and looping that to the existing eight-inch over in the existing right-of-way of Broadway. So we'll be removing that dead end and looping that line, but we will be extending that line from the intersection of Centennial and Settlers Landing down past our property. We're going to be extended in the future when those properties are developed. Sanitary sewer already exists to that, to this property on Centennial and we'll be extending sanitary sewer on Settlers Landing as required to provide any service to those properties in that area. So what I wanted to show you along with this, we will be, because we're extending the road and it's more than, we will go ahead and make sure there's a hammerhead or some type of other turnaround for the fire. We don't want to get stuck in there or even have to go on private property necessarily. So we have chosen Lochner, HW Lochner Incorporated to do this. They do a lot of work with Tex-Stop. They've had a local office here for 12 years and they are on our, we went through the RFQ processor this year. They were on our, on our pre-approved list for that. So I wanted to show you, the, the design is for $189,400. It includes the resident project representative inspection services during construction also. And the estimated cost for these, for the water sewer and the street is about $1.4 million. Funding for the Settlers Landing will be through half cent. A Centennial Parkway extension will, funding will come out of the $1 million escrow fund set up by Wayfair for Centennial Parkway Extension.
Darian, can you go back to the very first area, that one? Can you, can you just kind of explain what the vision is long-term of, that road's just not going to end where it stops in the red? What's the, what's the vision long-term?
For Centennial Parkway?
Yes.
Centennial Parkway, that is shown on the master street plan to go all the way over to the existing Centennial Parkway over close to Paluxi. So it will create another line all the way over there. So ultimately, it will extend all the way over there as this property is developed through there.
And the, is the, the blue area that's city-owned property?
That's city-owned property. Where you see the pond right in that, left of it is the detention pond for the Wayfair, through the shops at Cumberland.
Move to approve M6. Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Why shouldn't the developers not pay you for that?
Sir, I'm sorry. If you want to speak, you can come up here and, Cassandra, can you put the timer on three minutes, please?
Hey, I'm just curious why the developer's not paying for all that? I mean, I understand why we're paying for the sewer, the water after, but whoever's developing that, shouldn't they put the streets in and why, why City of Tyler doing that?
You want to address that?
Yeah. So for, if you don't mind taking it back, I guess, but the, actually, Wayfair, which is doing the construction, I guess the present, just don't know if you can read the presentation up again or not. They're actually, which has the corner, they escrowed money for their portion of the design and construction.
So they're putting a million of the million for?
So we're actually using, we're using their funding to pay towards part of the design work.
Okay. So it's their million of the million for is what you?
The amount that we're taking from there is, now mind you, also the City of Tyler is the property owner for this, the property that's included there. And so as we have looked for that, that property, for the opportunity of development of that property, the Settlers Landing, which also the City of Tyler has an agreement with the development that is to its north, to then, to participate and to, on the construction and planning for Settlers Landing.
Okay. So, so they put into that escrow account and that's what you're using versus?
We're pulling from the escrow amount.
It's not mostly tax dollars that are doing that?
We're pulling from the escrow amount for the design work. Yes, sir.
Just the design work, not the construction work?
We don't know what the construction, there's been no bids for the construction work.
Okay. But is the plan to pull out of that?
Is the timer on?
I, I get, I'm just trying to figure out why city tax dollars shouldn't be paying for private shopping centers, roads?
Good.
Correct.
That, that's where I'm at. So it's a, I'm just trying to make sure that's what we're, it sounds like that's what we're doing.
For Centennial, and just for, to make sure everyone understands, Settlers Landing connecting to Broadway connects then to Centennial Parkway. For the city's master, street master plan, Centennial Parkway though, connects all the way to Paluxi. So you'll have an east-west corridor as far as just north of Loop 49. Similar to what the city did, participant did on Cumberland Drive, on the construction of Cumberland Drive from essentially where it kind of stopped at the ballfields all the way down to Old Jacksonville Highway.
But that's a component of this.
That's a component of it as well.
Is it on? Okay. I think that's three minutes, so.
All right. We got through with M6, right? Okay. We're down to the consent agenda. Everything look good or anything need to be pulled?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
That's me. All right, Mayor and Council. A few items of note to kind of bring to your attention. We're getting closer to the Second Annual Tyler Arts Festival on Saturday, September 9. Tyler Arts Festival is a free community event designed to increase our local artists' visibility and attract people to downtown Tyler. This event is hosted by the Downtown Tyler Arts Coalition, the Main Street Department, and the Liberty Hall Theater. We have 106 vendors participating, several gallery openings being highlighted, an art scavenger hunt, an artist battle. We will have the opening of the artist alleyway that we have that runs through downtown and more. And so we're very excited about that event. Last week, staff was able to attend a debrief call with the U.S. Department of Transportation on the recent raised grant that we, application that we submitted for our downtown projects. This was one where, if y'all remember, council approved as far as the resolution for that. They moved forward. Congressman Moran was very helpful in trying to help us through the processes and get us before the right people. Our application didn't get approved and we were kind of concerned, what are we missing? What was the issues there? And so the debrief that we were able to have with them provided valuable feedback to us on our application and insight into improving the application for the 2024's middle round. And so we're proud to say that Tyler received great feedback. There were 1,100 applications total and consisted of a three-phase review process. Tyler's project received a highly recommended in the merit evaluations and was reviewed in the second phase. During the first phase of the review, the project received the highest rating in six out of 10 grading, six out of eight grading categories. In the remaining two, the project received the second highest rating of medium. The comments provided stated that we needed information, that the information was present, that we needed to be flushed out with some additional details. Only 162 projects were funded this grant cycle. So we're very encouraged to be able to update our application and expect to bring to you this fall a re-submitting for the next application cycle that's set to open early in 2024. And then it's always good to kind of, y'all saw Sergeant John Boswell earlier today and just kind of to brag upon some of the stuff that we have going on, that the people you meet and get to say thank you to, what they're up to. In the last two weeks, Axon, which is our video camera system for body cameras and cameras in the car, has been on site of the police department with the north and south stations installing in-car video systems. During this time, 79 vehicles were installed, tested, and working. Vehicles from the police department, fire department, fire marshal, and city marshal were installed with the new system. We want to thank Sergeant Boswell and Teresa Rodriguez for the work, hours and hard work they put into making this possible. Also, we want to thank IT for their help in making this process. And the next steps are, next week Sergeant Boswell will work on getting as far as files set up for the flock. And these are the different cameras that we have and that can, as far as be able to report to the vehicles as well for license plate recognition. And this will allow for officers to get alerts during their regular patrols of any suspicious activity. So we're very excited about this as far as where it's moving forward. And again, we thank Sergeant Boswell and the staff involved in this for helping make this
this happen.
All right. Any questions or comments for the city manager before we adjourn? Everybody good? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned.